All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Get Growing Weekly Work Session. I'm Coach Ashley, and we are joined this week by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for joining. We're excited to have you here.
Absolutely. And yeah, so today we are going to be talking about sharing. This is a topic that has been requested of us for a long time, and this is going to be quite a big one. So I hope you are ready with something to take notes with. If you've got a pen and paper out, I think that'll do. Go ahead and pop in in the chat. Tell us where you're coming in from. And actually, I want to go ahead and ask you all a question before I start sharing my screen. I have a question for you. I didn't want to put it in a poll because a poll would limit the answers that we get. But once I bring this up on the slide, I would love it, Greg, if you could share maybe some of the feedback that we get. So here's what I want to ask you guys. When you think about sharing your Young Living business, what frustrates you the most? All right, pop that over into our chat box here and let us know. When you think about sharing your Young Living business, what is it that frustrates you the most? And just to do a little bit of housekeeping here, if you're brand new here today, this is the weekly work session. We do this every week at the same time. You will find the replays on our YouTube channel, and then also you'll find them in your inbox. Because if you're here today, it's because you signed up to receive the invite. This is open to everyone who is a Young Living distributor, not just members of Get Oiling, although we'd love it if you'd join us so that we can help you grow your business. So yeah, every other week, just to keep up with the housekeeping here, every other week we'll go in-depth on a topic, and then we'll do more of like a Q and A, open form walkthrough of different features and stuff like that on the weeks in between. So are we starting to see some comments coming in?
We are. We've got a couple here.
Great. I'm actually going to go ahead and grab a share real quick so you guys can, so we can start going through the, so we can actually start going through the presentation itself. All right. Good deal. All right. So there's our poll. So when you think about sharing your Young Living business, what frustrates you the most?
All right, we've got Karen here that says unanswered phone calls. Totally understand that one. Wendy's got when people ignore your social media posts. Marissa says apparently low level of influence slash prospects.
Okay. Okay, you're on to something there in that last one. Okay, so and I'll get to that in just a second. So today we are going to cover first what you need to understand before you get started, right? So first things first, what you need to understand if you want any sharing strategy to work for you. So today, we're not really going to be getting into, okay, is Facebook better than Twitter, is better than Pinterest or blogging or whatever? We're going to talk about some high-level concepts that are going to influence your success, no matter what route you choose, because anything can work if you've got the first things right. All right, then we're going to talk about whether you're pushing or pulling with your marketing, and what's the difference between these? We're going to talk about social media sharing, say that 10 times fast. We're going to talk about best practices for social media sharing. I'm also going to share with you three of my favorite super easy strategies that you can use today to share and start getting new people looking at your business right away. We're also going to talk about the anatomy of an effective share, because this isn't just about pasting up information. This is a process. And then finally, where we have time, we will take your Q and A. All right. So first, the two things that you're going to need in place before you begin sharing. First is the understanding that sharing is actually 98% strategy and having the right mindset. Okay, this isn't about having the right images or magic words, or you know, or the right video, or the right platform, or the right time to post. It's about the right mindset, and it's about having a strategy in place before you start. Because without that mindset, you're betting on luck, and luck, not a business strategy outside of Las Vegas, right? So today, we're not going to be sharing with you any magic beans, you know, any magic words or magic photos or whatever. It's going to make people instantly say, oh, my God, I'm going to buy all those oils, and I'm going to go Royal Crown Diamond. Watch me. I mean, although it'd be really cool if that happened, we're just here to be real with you. That's not how it works. So if I sound a little bit like your mom trying to make you eat your broccoli, I just want you to be healthy, i.e., I just want you to have a really successful business, and I want you to know the truth, okay? All right. So second, and this is really critical. This is a hard thing for a lot of us to accept and to move past. It's the source of our frustration when people don't take the action that we want them to in regard to our business, and it's hard to hear. But most importantly, understanding and moving past this one thing will lift a huge weight off your shoulders and help you move forward more easily. Okay, collective deep breath, everybody. The hard truth. Nobody cares about your business. Even the people that love you, they don't. You are the only person that cares about your business the way that you do, and it's okay. See, there's a reason why people don't care, and there's also reasons why you really shouldn't take it personally that they don't. First is biology. We're just wired this way. Humans are wired to be selfish, self-involved creatures. We're looking out for what's for us. Good for you if that's for you, but I'm working on me, right? Okay, and also, in this age, in the information age, the average human has the average attention span of a goldfish, which is about eight seconds, which means people aren't paying attention long enough to care. Also, in the information age, we have information inundation. There are too many things to care about. People go numb, right? People just don't care because they don't have the capacity to in a lot of cases. Also, they don't understand yet, and this is important, they don't understand yet why they should care about your business, aka what's in it for me? Why? Why should I care about this? Oh, that's a post. You're having a sale. Okay, I have my own things going on in life. Why should I care about this? See, this is a hard thing to hear, right? Because we invest so much into what we do. We care so deeply about what we're doing and the impact that we want to make on others, that we don't necessarily have this click and realize that, oh, my God, people don't care, and we've got to help them connect those dots. And we're going to talk about how to do that today. We want them to care. So how do we make them care? Let's go into a little bit of Influence 101. And I want to let you guys know that the source of this part of today's training is credited heavily to the great Simon Sinek, who wrote the book Start With Why. And there's a concept called the golden circle that I'll get into in just a moment, but I want to make sure, and you guys, when we're off the video today, make sure you go Google the golden circle, Simon Sinek. He did a great TED Talk back in like 2012 or something, timeless wisdom, right? All right, so Influence 101. Now, the fact is, the most effective, impactful, and influential social and business leaders throughout history have one thing in common: in the way that they think, the way that they act, and in the way that they communicate. And it's the opposite of what the rest of us do. This is really important. You remember how I said there's a thing you need to, it's 98% mindset? There's a shift you need to make that'll make everything that you do in the direction of sharing work for you, all right? And this is the switch you need to flip. This is the change in direction you need to make in your own psychology before you go out and you start promoting, all right? Because what we're doing is the opposite of what's actually effective and proven to be effective, like backed up with biology proven to be effective in the way that people are influenced to make decisions. Now, this is the golden circle, all right? So we communicate from the outside in, right? We start with the thing that's clearest and move toward the thing that's fuzziest to the degree that we can trudge through it. We go from the most obvious thing to the least obvious thing when we're explaining something. And I'll go a little further. So here's how we share Young Living, right? We start with the what. The what is easy, right? We all know what. It's Young Living. It's essential oils, home cleaning, personal care supplements, pet care, baby care, heritage grains, and a lot more, right? We know this. This is easy, right? It's easy to say, you know, 24% off retail. It's easy to say what all we have. And then here's how we share in addition. So next, so we know the why. Now, some of us know the how. Some of us know this better than others. If we're just getting started, we might not understand the how quite so well. The how is seed to seal, therapeutic grade, using diffusers, supporting wellness, compliant language, premium starter kit, essential rewards, YLGO, become a distributor, PV, OGV, rank advancement, and more, right? Here, we start getting into more of that minutia, more of that stuff that's a little more foreign to the people who aren't already on the inside, right? Now, here's a problem. People don't care about the list of whats or the list of whys, or I'm sorry, the list of whats or the list of hows until they understand the why. You know, and the why is personal. And this is an interesting thing about whys. You may have learned from a leader in the company or from your upline that you need to figure out what your why is, and let that be the thing that leads you through the growth of your business and your growth into being a leader. But how often do you put that why out to the world and make that understood in context with what you do? We don't typically do that. Our why is usually something that we have on our bathroom mirror, right? Or something that we look at around us when we look at our children. It's not something that we're communicating, and that is the disconnect. So I'll give you an example that might help you understand this. If Apple were like the rest of us, if they communicated like the rest of us, they'd sound like this. We make great computers. That's what we do. They're beautifully designed, simple to use, and user-friendly. That's how we do it. Want to buy one? Eh, right? Not particularly compelling, right? So this is how Apple actually communicates. In everything we do, we believe in challenging the status quo. We believe in thinking differently. The way we challenge the status quo is by making our products beautifully designed, simple to use, and user-friendly. We just happen to make great computers. Want to buy one? See the difference? It's a really big difference. You're starting with why. People resonate with that, right? People don't buy what you do. They don't buy Young Living. They don't buy just the oils. They buy why you do it. And I think those of you who have seen some breakthroughs through this throughout your time in this business understand that, right? When people can really feel the connection to why you do what you do, they automatically trust and say, yeah, of course, I'm going to get on to essential awards. Yes, of course, I'm going to ditch and switch my whole house, because they've already understood why you do it, and that's connected to them in a way that matters, in a way that's influenced their ability to make a decision, and a big one, right? So your goal here isn't to sell to everyone. It isn't to promote to everyone. It isn't to share with everyone. Your goal, if you're doing this correctly, is to work with those who believe what you believe, who resonate with your why. And I need to add a little caveat here, because this isn't believe what you believe, like you have to have the same politics or the same religion or like the same colors. This is you resonate with the same values. You're putting those out there. Other people are attracted to you who share those things, and you can grow together around those ideals. You resonate with the why, right? They don't have to have the exact same why, but it's a heightened awareness, right? It's sort of resonating at a higher level with one another, if that makes sense. That's what you're looking for. You're looking for your tribe. And when you look at it this way, things start to get a lot easier. There isn't, you know, a convoluted mental gymnastics when you try to think about how you might be able to get information in front of people. When you start thinking about it this way, it's easier to share. It's more natural when you start sharing yourself, right? So your why, what you're about. In this way, you'll begin to attract those right people into your business. And I can attest to this personally. And there were a broad diversity of people from around the world with different religions and different politics and different points of view. But we all gathered around this ideal of growing something bigger than ourselves. And if you can grow a team like that, imagine how quickly you can grow and advance to the higher ranks in this company. So start making the shift, right? Because again, 98% of sharing isn't about posting something. It isn't about the words or the picture. It's about the mindset behind it. So start making the shift in your life today to find your tribe. Find them online. They're all over the place. Facebook groups, right? Meetup.com. Find folks locally. If you're into knitting, join a knitting circle. Make friends with them, not for the purpose of, I'm going to now go blast everyone with, you know, with promotions, right? No, no, to expand your circle, to have a more fulfilling life, because this is bigger than sharing Young Living or just making money, right? This is about living to your fullest potential and surrounding yourself with others who want to do the same. And it's about living for your great big why, right? As though you're actually committed to seeing it through in the next five years. And what that's going to require, if you haven't heard this, I believe it's a Jim Rohn quote already, you are the sum, or you're, sorry, you're the average of the five people you spend the most time with. Start elevating your circle, and you're going to find people who are running to you, who want to join your circle, and obviously want to find out about that amazing thing that's adding so much value to your life. Now, you'll find that sharing is going to come more naturally when you're clear on your why and attracting your tribe, right? That makes sense, right? So I want to move over into push versus poll marketing, because I think that this is a pretty, it's a pretty solid transition logically, right? Because when you think about it, when we share, a lot of us typically, we grab some images, right, of a product. Maybe there's a sale on that product, and we just want to go get that out to the world, right? And what I've been talking to up until this point, talking about our mindset, right? Talking about the idea of attracting people to us. That's something that's wholly different, isn't it? The strategies are going to be different, and I'll break down what that looks like today, I promise. But there's a difference between these two types of marketing. So push marketing is literally pushing out information in front of people so as to have them see it. I talked about this in another, in another training recently about, you know, you remember, I remember the Quiznos, the sandwich guy is dancing around like a maniac on the side of a busy road, holding a sign. Just because he's there and you drive past him doesn't make you hungry for a sandwich, right? And it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to come back to that place because you saw a dancing guy once. I mean, if you really love Quiznos and you already have a relationship with that company, then that works. But that doesn't apply to the masses. It's not particularly effective, right? So if you're already a Quiznos customer and you've just moved to a new area, and the Quiznos guy is all dancing around, you're like, oh, yeah, there's my Quiznos. I'm going there. That's like a 1%, right? In the 99, you know, the 99% is just a whole lot of traffic driving by saying, oh, look at that guy, right? So poll marketing is setting yourself up to bring more people to you, right? To become the resource, to build that trust, to place something out into the world that people become attracted to. And I'll give you an example here in the retail world. So on the, on the left for me, I hope it's also the left for you in presenting this, you have a storefront where it's all, it's just yelling, sale, 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 right? If I don't have a relationship with that business, if I don't already have the why connection to that business, I'm not going to stop. Most people aren't going to stop. And to the other side of the spectrum, you've got Sephora, which, you know, those of you who are here, if you've ever shopped there before, this is not a company that puts sale signs out in front of their place of business. Now, they may put specials up for people who are VIBs or insiders, right? Because they build community. If you look at the numbers in retail, and retail is suffering right now in offline brick and mortar. Sephora is killing it, and the reason why is because they are connecting, they're building community, and they're making it about you. When you walk into their store, you're going to have a fundamental difference of experience than in any other type of retail store that you would walk into. You get personalized treatment. You get all kinds of free samples. They'll give you a makeover. You can try all kinds of things. And even if it's not, you know, even if all of their products aren't necessarily your kind of thing, they have a personal touch. They make you feel special. They make you feel human. They make you feel listened to. They care about you, and so you keep coming back, right? So this is why this works so well. And obviously, we would all prefer to use more natural products, right? But just to show you, this is the real difference. You need to stand tall in who you are, stand tall in your why, and you'll be a beacon to people who like the kinds of things that you have to say and share. Now, the big difference between these two is, like I just mentioned, people are treated like people first, not opportunities or things to promote and sell to. Also, brands, and in this case, us individuals, distributors, put in the work first to deliver value and establish a relationship, right? So building that trust with people. Because once we build that trust, they'll buy. Because once that relationship is there, the sharing is easy, right? It's a natural extension. We have connected over your interest in solving a particular problem. I'm someone that you have found who has been credible and has been helpful. And so naturally, when I share a solution to your problem, you are going to be interested in taking me up on it, right? So the relationship needs to be there, and a lot of us skip that step. And it takes a little longer, right? Like, it's a little bit harder to get to that point, but isn't it more effective? Isn't your time spent more effectively that way? And it's also, in this case, and this is really important as well, for those of you who have studied mindset and you know the difference between abundance and scarcity mindsets, you will attract more people of abundant mindset when you don't have to focus so much on sale, sale, discount, discount, right? You want people who want to be a part of the journey with you. Obviously, we would love to have more volume from purchases across the board, but in terms of what you put out there and how you choose to grow, I can't recommend anymore. Like, you need to focus on finding people who think abundantly and who aren't just showing up because something's on sale, right? You want people who have that commitment over time. People who are sale-minded will go anywhere it's cheapest. And that's not the business that you want to attract. Here's a great example of poll marketing. This is the one and only Maven Martha Stewart. She's a poll marketing Maven since the 1980s. And even before the internet was really a thing that we all participated in, she was out there doing poll marketing by sharing valuable free content on television, doing, you know, doing local news shows, sharing recipes. She did this in print. She built trust and following with lots of people who then went on to buy her products, right? We all know who she is, to subscribe to her magazine and to watch her shows. So she put a ton of value out there and became known for something that mattered, right? And the people who that resonated with, the people who said that matters to me too, they had no problem going and taking her recommendations, purchasing what she said they should purchase, and so on. You get the idea, right? So people will be a lot more responsive when you are pulling, and not like forcefully pulling, but you know, leading a horse to water by, you know, by salting the food as opposed to, come on, come over here. Because that's obviously not how people work or horses. All right, so how you can be a poll marketing Maven is first to create and share content that's valuable to your tribe. Now, content that might sound foreign to you if you haven't been through, say, like the Get Oiling 90 Day Challenge. But content is actually really simple. It's Facebook posts, pictures, blog posts, videos, tutorials, things that are valuable to you and valuable to your tribe, things that speak to your why. These things will educate, inform, inspire, and entertain. You notice none of these words say promote. That's the interesting thing here, guys. When we think about sharing our business, we remember thinking from the outside of the golden circle and toward the middle. The effective thing to do is start from the inside out. So share the values at the core of what you're about, and that will attract and engage people, and that will move people closer and closer to making that decision to buy whatever it is that you recommend, right? I can tell you, this is obviously anecdotally, it's my own experience, but when I was promoting my previous network marketing businesses, I didn't talk about my company ever. I shared my values. I got people curious. And then they'd come to me and say, okay, what is it that you do? I don't know what it is, but I'm interested in joining, right? When you have that message so strong and declared so strongly and out there so readily for people to understand, they'll latch on to what you say, and sharing is easy, okay? Make it about them. This is really important as well. Making sure that this isn't about like, I have a business. I'm promoting it. Buy my stuff. No, it's, I am here to help you. I understand your problems. We have the same goals. I'd like to help you achieve them, right? That's what this is about. What speaks to you more clearly? How would you like to be spoken to? Think about it that way before you go and write a post or reach out. You also want to make sure, and this is cool, you want to be unabashedly yourself when you do these things. Just no vanilla here. I mean, you can love vanilla, but you have other flavors, and you can let those be prominent, because it's perfectly okay and even ideal to repel some people. You don't want everyone in your business. There are some sales that are not worth it. I think some of you, you can raise your hand right now and let us know that you know that that's true. You have dealt with that person before, that you're like, oh, gosh, why did I? Right? You don't want that. You are in business for yourself so that you are able to build your business the way you want it, right? If you wanted to work with whoever showed up, you would, you know, this would be a regular job, right? And that's not what you're here for. All right. So this is why it's critical for you to focus on poll marketing versus push. First, you're in a people business. People want to be treated like people, not heads or potential sales. Also, you're on social media, and this is exactly the right place to engage in poll marketing. You also have over 3 million people in the world who are distributors. Now, I understand a lot of folks got, you know, they're technically distributors because they get a discount, but at any point in time, they could wake up one day and say, oh, wait, I've got the potential to build a business. There's tons and tons and tons and tons of distributors all over the place, and it's critical for you to set yourself apart. Now, there are enough people out there in the world right now who share your why, who resonate with your why, and are ready to build with you to Royal Crown Diamond. They just haven't found you yet, and, or they don't understand your why yet, right? This is how you stand out, and it's not by saying, I'm better than the next person who's also selling Young Living products. No, of course not. That's not who we are. That's not how this works. This is, I am who I am, and I get you, and if you're with me, let's do this. Which one of those things is more useful and compelling to another person, right? All right. So let's talk about social media best practices. First, understand this, again, keeping in mind with what we've been talking about here. Your name is not Tina Young Living Jones. You are you. Your business is you. Your business is not even technically Young Living. Your business is you and your why, your purpose. Your business, your why, your purpose, this is what people join. They join you. If people joined Young Living just for Young Living, they would just all go to the corporate page and sign up there. No, they join you, right? So make the way you share targeted around that, your values, your why, your purpose. If you feel like you're spinning your wheels when you post promotions online outside of targeted groups, the reason why you're not seeing the results there, or even the curiosity there that could be, is because it's not you. They care more about what happened in your life today than whether or not a product that you have is on sale. And so you need to interact with how this works a little differently, kind of touch on the psychology, turn that a little bit, right? To adjust the way that you look at this and the way that you talk about this, communicating from the inside of that golden circle outward, all right? Now, the goal here, in everything that you do, especially on social media, is to inspire curiosity online so that people come to you to ask you how they can learn more about what has made your life so awesome, right? That's the goal. If you put everything out there, what are they going to ask you about, right? Save your promotions. And I mean, you know, this is on sale this week, or this is, you know, this is this month's promotion and so on. Save those for your subscribers. So the people in your contact manager who have opted into a campaign on Get Oiling, for instance, and for your private member group. So if you have a Facebook group with people who have purchased from you, right? Share those promotions there the majority of the time. Because your social networks don't know what PV or ER or PSK is, and they don't care yet, remember? That's on the outside of the circle. You've got to get them on the inside first, and then they'll come through, right? And then on your wall or elsewhere in the communities that you're a part of on Facebook, or whatever social media platform that you engage on, share substantive things, value-based things that you care about, right? Have that be the majority of what you do, sharing, again, your values, your why, your purpose, and finding more of those people that resonate with those things. And then start conversations. This is a really powerful thing that you can do on social media that will not only get more people curious about what you have to offer or more open to engage with you in the future, it also does something to Facebook's algorithms. When you can get people engaged in conversations on posts that you make on your Facebook wall, for instance, Facebook will start to see as more people engage on it that you're someone that people want to hear from, and they'll start like bumping what you say up to the top of your connections news feeds. That's really powerful. Start conversations. Ask questions. Get people talking about themselves. One of the most valuable things that you can do to build influence and get people to be more open to what you have to say is to have them talk about themselves. I promise you, it works, okay? And you want to be someone who is interested in other people, right? People who are interesting to others are the ones who are most interested in others. So you want to make sure that you keep that in mind. Share your life in your photos, right? Be candid and be... Be candid and be relatable. Follow the eighty twenty rule. Now, sometimes you may want to post a promotion and that's fine, but here's how I'd recommend that you do it. Twenty percent of the time, when you're not sharing your life and the value content and so on, you invite people to see something interesting. To learn something new that's relevant to them, to find a solution that would improve their life or improve an outcome that that they're looking for. In our ninety day challenge inside of Get Oiling, if you click the help button and you're at basic or higher membership. Uh, you can scroll down and I think it's week seven, but I'm not entirely sure. Um, there is one particular, um, there's an oily event strategy. Uh, training, and in that training, we talk about how you can set yourself apart, how you can talk to the interests. That people have and their values specifically through your events. So instead of just saying, I'm going to do an essential oils one oh one class. You can say, I'm going to do a specific class that targets a specific need or issue or group of people or value set and so on. You see what I'm saying? So you're talking about maybe, um. You know, seasonal wellness, right? With spring coming up or spring cleaning or makeovers or whatever. It's not a, I'm just gonna talk about essential oils. You're making it more dynamic. You're making it more uh, more relevant to the people who are following you. So make it interesting to them. Remember, think about them. Make it about them. When people feel like what you're doing is for them, then they're obviously going to take you up on it. And then there's also this talk of being the product of the product. I'm sure you guys have heard of this before. You want to be the product of your product. But we need to understand what that is, right? The product of the product with Young Living is not being Young Living's billboard, right? It's about being a more healthy, happy, successful, inspired you. That's the product of Young Living, isn't it? That's what you get from Young Living's products, isn't it? It's a better you. Right? So put that out there. That's what's going to attract the right attention. That's what's going to attract curiosity. Because if you just say Young Living and promotion and this oil on sale, people are gonna go to, they're just gonna say, okay, well, there's nothing more for me to know there. You want to inspire curiosity. Like Grandma said. Leave something to the imagination. In the same way that you address yourself, carry yourself on social media, leaving something to the imagination. Give people something to ask you about. Give them something to be curious about. Leave that little breadcrumb cookie trail. Let people come and say, what is it that's going on in your life that's got you so happy? What is it that you're doing that's allowing you to go on these vacations? What is it that's transformed? Your, you know, your wellness so much, because I remember you used to talk about this all the time, and now you just, everything just seems so great. What's your secret? You want people to come to you and ask you that. So just like you, you know, don't show too much skin, don't show too much of what you want people to come and ask you for. Alright, now let's talk about the anatomy of an effective share, because if you are sharing, you need to understand it doesn't just mean posting a thing. And hoping that someone is going to engage with it, right? A share is a full cycle of activity. So here's what that looks like. It's not passive first. Like I said, it's not, you don't just post it here and hope they see it. The share begins and ends. This is so important. It begins and ends with direct, personal interaction. This means a phone call, a video call, or in person. Your invitation is not passive. This is not a. Hey, everybody posting on, you know, your Facebook wall to however many hundreds of friends you have. Hey, everybody, I'm having an event in such and such place at such and such time. Hope you'll come. I'm sure you all know the degree of effectiveness that carries, right? What you do when you're inviting, right? That's the beginning of a share. Invite. Share. Collect a decision or follow up and collect a decision, right? You need to be in touch with them directly. I prefer telephone personally. Uh, I think that it it creates a situation where people are required. To interact with you uh, directly and immediately. If you do this via text or via Facebook message or something like that, then people can. Oh, I stepped away from my computer or oh, my phone was on silent or whatever, and they can choose to not respond to you. Don't give them an out when you are inviting, right? Be direct. You know, you can, you can be yellow and be direct too. I know my, I you can probably tell I'm a little red here. But uh, but but get in touch with people directly, call them personally, invite personally, and then the follow up is also personal as well. It's not passive. Alright, a share is not complete until you have asked for a decision. After they have confirmed review of information. Now, if in this, you know, confirmed review of information would be if you're having someone review information on your website. Or if you want people to review uh, something that's not person to person in person, you giving them a presentation, right? So you want to follow up in person immediately while everything is still top of mind, right? And the share isn't complete until you have asked them whether or not they're ready to get started. Right? The purpose of sharing is to get a new member. And you are wasting your time if you are not collecting that decision. And then finally, you're not done collecting a decision until you've asked enough questions. And either performed or scheduled your close. So after someone reviews information, you ask them. What did you like about it? Or if you want to get into the double positives, was that awesome or was that awesome? They'll say yes. What did you like best? The oils or the lifestyle or both? They they tell you what. Okay, cool. You're ready to get started. Lot of ways to do this. We do have a training that covers this inside of, of course, the ninety day challenge as well in the back office of Get Oiling under the help section. But um, you also want to make sure if you've got a, you know, a share situation. Where someone has said, I really love this, but I don't have the money right now, or I need to talk to my spouse or whatever. That objection might be, then you say, okay, that's cool. So what's a good time for us to sit down and get you started then? Or what's a good time for us to sit down with your spouse so I can help answer any questions that your spouse might have? You're not done. Right? Sharing is not posting. Sharing is specific specifically inviting. Specifically showing in whatever form you're showing, specifically following up to confirm that they have actually reviewed all the information as quickly as possible after they were, they've reviewed it. And then following that up, you are going to ask for that decision. And if they say, oh, well, not yet, don't wait until the future. Put it on the schedule, right? Put it on the calendar. Make yourself the reminder for it in your to do's in Get Oiling. And of course, follow up at that time and close. Remember, the share is just one piece of the entire IPA, income producing activity, business building cycle. Invite, share, follow up, close. You are not done until you have gone through each of these steps. Even if somebody's not ready right now, they will be ready in the future. You schedule that date. So the more often you close this loop, invite, share, follow up, close, the more you're going to grow. Alright, so make sure that when you're out there sharing that you understand. That there is more involvement in it than just pasting a promotion, right? There's more involvement in it than just hoping, right? This hoping is not a strategy. However, posting and getting someone intrigued, right? And then having them reach out or you reaching out directly. That is going to do a lot for you to get people exposed, and then of course, you got to collect that decision. Otherwise, you wasted your time. Alright, so I want to talk about three of my favorite super easy sharing strategies. The first one is kind of sneaky, not in a bad way. I call it the favor. This is ideal for warm market. Um, this is a direct contact. Meaning you don't post this on social media, you actually reach out to someone directly. And you say, I've just made a new website for my business and I'm really excited about it. Can you take a look at it for me? I'd really appreciate your feedback. So hey, can you do me a favor and look at this for me? Now, a lot of you here today, or maybe some of you after we get off of our call today. Have or will have a beautiful Get Oiling website, which is, excuse me, already set up for you. Excuse me, it's already set up for you when you sign up. Uh, you, all you have to do is plug in your Young Living user number or your Young Living member number. And it's basically set up for you, ready to go, and even directs off to your Young Living website when people want to click on particular items. Um, and learn more about them. So this is a really easy way to share right now. And you could have just made an edit. So hey, I made some changes to my business website. I'd really love your feedback. And so of course, in in the the course of of looking over that website. They're gonna learn more about Young Living and why it's different. They're gonna click those videos. They're gonna watch, but they're not gonna feel like you pushed something on them. Right? They're gonna say, oh, I'm gonna, my friend has a business and maybe I've heard about it before, or maybe I've just given it a little bit of my time. But I'm gonna do my friend a favor and I'm gonna look at this. And then. You share your Get Oiling site, right? And then you be sure to set that appointment for after the fact, so you're present for immediate feedback. Ask them what they liked about it. Right? Because you got them to look at it because you asked them a favor. Now they've actually looked at it and you can follow up on the closing questions for Young Living, can't you? Ask them what they like best and then let them ask you questions about Young Living, right? Let them ask you questions about essential oils and about the products. Let them get curious. Right? And that's another, that's a mistake that we make in sharing as well is that we overshare. We want to make sure that we share just enough, just show enough, get them curious, right? Let them come to you asking questions. Alright, now here's the next one for you Reds out there. I love this, and if any of you are feeling. Um, you know, particularly daring, then you may try this as well. Uh, when I was younger and single, uh, this was something that I actually did, uh. Not just for entertainment, I actually recruited quite a few people into my business this way, just, you know, hanging out at a bar or restaurant with friends, you know, standing in line to use the restroom or something like that. This is the recruiter. Alright, so after you meet someone additionally, you say, so what do you do for a living? They'll answer. Then you say, cool, do you love it? Nine times out of ten, they say no. So if I could show you a way to. Blank, would you be interested? So in this case, it could be, you know, oh, so what do you do? Oh, well, I'm an engineer or I'm a, you know, I'm a waitress or whatever. Do you love it? No, not really. So how long are you gonna do that? What I would ask. Oh, I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, I gotta do this because this and that and the other thing or whatever. And and then I'd say, well, if I could show you a way that you couldn't, obviously this, I'm not talking about, you know, right away, but if I could show you a way to get into business for yourself. To where you could eventually leave that job and not have to worry about having a job again. Is that something you'd be interested in checking out? Nine times out of ten, it's a yes. This is a very red strategy. It is a business forward recruiting strategy. But it definitely gets people curious, doesn't it? Right? Get their number and then set a date and time. That's the next step there. That's what you do. Alright, and then finally, the coach. This is something that you can actually do on social media. This could be cold market. It could be warmer market. It definitely requires a little bit of context. Alright, now I'll explain what that means here in a second. So first is you post on a wall or in a group on social media. Asking people to share their health or other goals, you know, so maybe they have a fitness goal or, you know, what's uh, or or, you know, a business goal, income goal, whatever it might be. You you have people share your goals, and we're still in the beginning of this year, um, as as we broadcast this today at the end of February. Right? People are still thinking about the things they promised themselves they'd do this year, and this works any time of year, to be fair. Um, but so first ask, you know, so hey, what, I'm curious for everyone who's here. What is your number one goal as it pertains to? You know, and this, this obviously is where you would want to connect your why, right? Spiritual growth, it could be um, personal development, it could be health, it could be any number of things, but ask that question. You're getting people to talk about themselves, you're asking people to engage in a conversation, and they're giving you information that's helpful to you to help them. Interact with what you have to share in the best way possible, right? Alright, so after people respond publicly on the post. Move the conversation with them over to the DMs, over to the chat where you're chatting one on one. So have a little bit more of that conversation. Say, hey, I see you're talking about, you know, about losing weight. Ask them. Why is it that you want to do that? Ask them how they plan to get it done. And then you ask them, if I could show you a way to achieve that goal more quickly, would you be interested in seeing how? And then, of course, you set up the appointment. You get on the phone, you share the website, you, you know, you you bring them over to your house, so you meet the coffee or however it is that you would prefer to go next. Right? Now, I think maybe a lot of you here today might have thought that sharing strategies might have meant that we would, um, you know, I'd be telling you what image to use and what time to post it. But the fact is, is that these strategies. Are effective because what you're doing is you're you're taking the step before the actual mechanism of sharing, right? The act, the actual mechanism, mechanism of putting information in front of people requires that you first. Have them say, I want to know more, and then you say, oh, well, I can help you with that, right? You've got to create that circumstance, and that's why those three approaches are so, so useful. Because first you have to spark that curiosity and then they say, oh, well, tell me more. And that's, you know, so that's the invite, right? And then they say, tell me more, and then you share. I hope that makes super, super strong sense. We obviously are going to get into Q and A now, so if you guys have any questions about strategy. That uh, that I've shared with you or anything that we've covered, I'm super happy to talk about it. I'm gonna get out of my share here. Alright. Actually made good time on that.
Yeah, it looks like we've got a few uh, few questions here. Wendy had asked. Do you mean we should share our why, like debt freedom or a why of? Our why of why our product is important, like toxin free living?
Hmm, okay, so so let's just, I'll I'll pick one of those examples, and that's a really good question. So if your goal is debt freedom, right? And and that's really where your values are, and maybe it's that you, you personally want to achieve debt freedom. But you're also, you know, you're you're looking to resonate with other people who share that goal as well, right? Or other people who who would see value in articles or tips about frugality or. Um, or financial responsibility and so on. That's the foot in the door, right? So maybe you could do, if this is something that you care a lot about, you could do a webinar using a Zoom meeting. On Get Oiling, or you could record a video or some, you know, just quick little thing, teaching someone something that you know. Right? And then having them interact with it and say, hey, I see that, you know, that's something that you're interested in as well. I found something that's helping me to achieve that end. Would you like to see it? Right? So what we're talking about today is almost kind of like a combo of sharing and prospecting, because really what you're doing is you're teeing yourself up to be able to make that exposure. So, you know, in the instance of toxin free living, again, you could create an article on your um, or blog post on your your Get Oiling blog. And you could post those things online where you're talking about toxin free living. Now, this isn't. Get Oiling's toxic free, or I'm sorry, this isn't Young Living's toxin free living, right? This is yours. This is what matters to you. This is your values. This is why you want to be toxin free. And then when people engage with that, you say, hey, listen, I see this is something that you're interested in. I found a way to replace all of the, you know, the nasty stuff in my home. Would you be interested in seeing how I did that? And then you share, and then it makes sense. Alright.
Amelia asks, how do we get people to join our private group?
Hmm, okay, so you need to be clear on what the value of that private group is, right? So inside this private group, are you sharing uh, information that serves a particular purpose? So like that toxin free living or debt free living, right? Um. Consider creating a community uh, that is centered around the things that are really important to you. So even if you are just focusing on, you know, abundance mindset and and helping people to grow. Um, into more abundant thinking, there are, there are health uh, things that relate to that, like, you know, recipes and things like that. There's, there's financial stuff that relates to that. There's daily, um, you know, habit building. There's, you know, simplifying your living. There's a lot of things that you can share. Um, that are valuable to you. Think about the things that that you really like to read about and engage with. And, you know, and just share what you find valuable, even if it's not something, I mean, obviously, we would want you to create your own content. Um, as often as you can, but even if you find somebody else's that you think is great and you think would be helpful to people who who follow you, that's, that's value. Just make sure it's, you know, resonant with uh, you know, with with your why and what you're putting out there and what you want to attract.
Okay, here's another question from Robin about what if you're fairly new and don't have personal evidence that the product's working?
Oh, that's a great question. So the beautiful thing about network marketing is there are so many stories. Right? And and you have your own immediately. So in terms of the products working, if you're US based, there's not really much you can say about them. Working, right? Um, aside from your own personal experiences. So what made you decide to join? What is it about them that you love? And share that, and that's what you know, right? That's important. You need to have your relationship with the oils and obviously. You know, you're you're not going to be able to, and you know, in particularly compliant language to say, well, they work because X, Y, Z. But you can talk about how they work and 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 really, so long as you're authentic, you know, like, say, say, listen, I. My friend opened this bottle of oil. I smelled it. I was blown away. I use it for everything. I don't really know that much about all of this yet, but I'm really excited. I've got big goals. And I'm, and and then, of course, you need to connect this to your why. Of course, I can't complete the sentence for you because I don't know your why, um, but this isn't about you knowing that they work. We know they work and and honestly. If you're approaching this from the inside out, inside of that golden circle out. the, the what and the how, which is the how they work, right? And your anecdotes of how they work, that's not what makes people join. That's, that's not why they make the decision. So understand it's not, if you don't feel like you have that yet, it's not the most important thing. Your why is the most important thing and your vision and how you share that.
Yeah. Bee says, "I say maintenance. Thank, thank God I'm very healthy. Good answers. Connect to the why." So I think kind of expanding on what you were saying there.
Uh huh.
Jan asks, "So if you're moving forward with attraction marketing where there's no Young Living in your website menu, how do you suggest we handle the blogs with links to the products? Like if you're blogging on your website as well as trying to be, you know, doing the attraction marketing?"
Well, the thing is, is when you're doing attraction marketing, which guys, I know I didn't really talk about attraction marketing as a term in our presentation today. Attraction marketing and poll marketing, they're kind of the same thing, right? Attraction marketing was definitely something that was coined by, by someone. I don't know how, how heavily trademarked that is, but, but anyway, the, the idea being that you're, you're putting yourself out there so as to attract, to attract others who might be interested in taking those next steps. It's not, taking this approach doesn't mean never talking about Young Living ever. It, it definitely doesn't mean that. Because obviously, this is an integral part of, of what you have to offer and what you have to say. It's just that the means by which people interact with you doesn't need to be an inundation of Young Living, Young Living, Young Living, Young Living, Young Living, Young Living all the time, right? It needs to be, "Here's my favorite recipe for this" or "Here's what I'm doing today. Isn't this cool?" Not even business-related at all or oily, whatever. It needs to be a nice balance, right? Like a, imagine like a beautiful, a beautiful room, right? And, and it's a living room. That living room isn't all curtain panels or all chairs, right? There's a variety of things for you to interact with. And there may be a focal point. I, I was going somewhere with that, but you, you get what I mean. Because it's, it's, it's about having a, a beautiful collection of things for people, a beautiful and relevant collection of things for people to interact with. But that they understand that your primary purpose of interacting with them is to help them solve a problem. And that the promotion part, that 20% part that you, that you, that they would interact with needs to stay, you know, 20%. Because they're going to tune you out if all they ever see is promote, promote, promote. So, so yeah, and to answer your question more specifically, Jan, don't worry about having some posts that, that talk about products. Actually, what will happen is, is that if you are doing the work of keeping relevant service-forward content out there, right? So if you're thinking about them first and trying to help people solve problems, when they start digging and, and they want to get into more of what you have to say and then they stumble upon an article where you share a product, don't you think they're going to be more likely to choose to buy that product, right? Or, or to look into it further, to want to talk to you about it? So it's not bad to have Young Living out there on, on your, you know, your social media or, or your blog or your website, right? You actually want to have it in there somewhere. You just don't want to be a billboard.
Cool. We, we have a, I guess, more of a technical question from Sandy regarding the share. I haven't tried the text keyword feature, text and keyword feature. Is the keyword tied to the landing page or the blog post, actual blog page? Or can you do both? And I can answer this one, but so you set up the keyword actually on the landing page itself, but within the blog post, you can link to the landing page. So like on the bottom, you know, "Interested in this? Also click here to get, you know, to, to learn more about it." Or, you know, you probably have some more strategies than I do, Ashley, on that. That's kind of the general technical approach and then there's some strategy to it beyond that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And that's actually, that's a cool way to invite people, say, to like a Facebook group. If you're doing a live event somewhere, if you're doing a vendor event or something like that and you say, "Well, listen, I, I have a, I have a private Facebook group where I share, or I and, you know, and my, and my business partners share valuable information on healthy living or, you know, again, speaking to your why, this and that." Then you say, "All you have to do is text in this keyword to this number and then so long as you've got a campaign set up that automatically sends them a link to where they can join that Facebook page, then, then you're, you're good as gravy." It's a really cool way to do that. Or if you want to do a giveaway, we've done that before. Cool, cool.
Yeah, I don't see any other question. Oh, well, here's one that is sort of a question. So Cheryl asks, or says, "I am always hearing about people striking up conversations with everyone within three feet, but I've never heard what their opening line is." I assume maybe the question is, "What is the opening line?"
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that really just depends. I think that the trick to opening up conversations for that three-foot rule, because I'm, I'm blue and red and so you would, you would probably roll your eyes at like, "Oh, it's easy for me." And you'd be right to roll your eyes because it is something that tends to be a little more natural to blues and reds. But, but the trick is to listen. The trick is to ask questions. If you guys have heard of the book, How to Win Friends and Influence People, I believe it was written in like the 1920s by, by Dale Carnegie. It's fabulous. You know, it's obviously some antiquated social stuff in there in terms of, well, anyway, read it and you'll understand. But, but the gist of what he teaches in there is that in order for people, like in order for you to be considered interesting, right? And that's, that's, that's to be a leader, to be followed, right? You need to be interested in others because that is such a core tenet of attraction, right? When you show interest in others, they reciprocate that. It's, it's just a natural human reaction. So the, the trick is whether it's on social media or if you're in-person with people, to be curious. Ask them about their life. Ask questions that lead you to that point of being able to ask them if they'd be open to seeing what solution you have to the problem that you uncovered with your questions. Oh, I think Jan mentioned blog versus newsletter. So then that was an interesting question. Let's review blog versus newsletter. So your newsletter, Jan, is what you can create inside of GetOiling under the Saved Replies feature, under the settings of your contact manager. And there, that's where you're going to want to, you know, maybe once a month, right? Like when, when the promotions are released for, for Young Living, you send those out to your members, right? Or you send that out to people who have opted in to a particular type of, you know, so maybe you've got a landing page that talks about makeup and there are some makeup promotions. And so maybe you do like a healthy face newsletter once a month and you send that out to people who have said, "Yes, I'm interested in learning more about that." That's a great place for you to not only promote, but to share information. Your blog is where you would actually go and put articles. So newsletters go into the inbox and that's where people interact with them is in their mail. The blog is something that kind of serves as like a little mini Jan that's hanging out on the internet, waiting for people to show up so she can tell them about something cool. And so you can have a lot of Jans talking about a lot of cool things all at once, whereas a newsletter comes out from Jan once a month to the inbox. I hope that made sense. And I like the idea of lots of little Jans. Awesome, awesome. Cool. Anybody got any more questions, especially about, you know, about prospecting and sharing and stuff like that? Happy to answer them and so glad that you guys are all here. Jan, I don't think the world can handle more than one of you, hon. I was thinking about you and I made my horse analogy earlier.
Cool. I, I don't see any other questions in here. Lots of praise about this presentation today. So thank you for that.
Of course, of course. Fantastic. Oh, Amelia asked the name of the author of How to Win Friends and Influence People. That's Dale Carnegie.